Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led to us by Councilmember Kerry Buzinski.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. It looks like we have a packed house tonight, and we know why we have a packed house. We're here to honor former Mayor Jack Engelbrethson, and we have some accommodations for him tonight, and some people that would like to say a few things. But I'm going to start off. Honestly, there's not enough time to cover all of Mayor Jack Engelbrethson's contributions to our city and our community. Jack is a Wisconsin native and a U.S. Air Force veteran. He relocated with his wife, Ceni, from Washington, D.C. to the Detroit area in the 1960s, where he embarked upon a very successful career in the information technology, and eventually started his own software business. After selling the business in 1992, he turned his attention and his talents to our community. By the way, Jack and Ceni will be celebrating their 67th wedding anniversary later this Clearly, Ceni was a child bride.[94.54][94.54](LAUGHING). Former Livonia Mayor Bob Bennett appointed Jack to the Livonia Planning Commission, where he served for 10 years before being elected as City Council President in 1997, and again in 2001. In 2003, he successfully ran for mayor and was inaugurated as Livonia's ninth mayor. He served his term with honor and distinction, opting not to run for a second term. Interesting footnote: Mayor Engelbrethson's predecessor and successor were the same person, Mayor Jack Kirksey.[123.21][123.21](LAUGHING). Upon leaving office at the end of 2007, Mayor Engelbrethson was appointed to the Brownfield Commission, where he served until his retirement last month. He not only served as an outstanding member of the Commission, but also spent many years at the Commission's chair. Mayor Engelbrethson's contributions to our city government and our community are innumerable. In 2021, he, along with Mayor Dennis Wright, received the Livonia Legacy Award, one of the Livonia's highest honors that recognizes leaders who have a long-sustained record of exceptional work and service to the Livonia community throughout their careers. It is my pleasure, on behalf of Livonia City Council, to formally thank and recognize Mayor Jack Engelbrethson. Thank you, Jack.[166.62][166.62](APPLAUSE). Councilman Rob Donavich has accommodation from council.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and Mr. Mayor, and your wife. It's really awesome to see this many people in the chambers. As you know, oftentimes when you get this many people here, usually it's for not a good reason.[188.31][188.31](LAUGHING). There's a lot of opinions in the room, but it's nice to see so many of your friends and family and members of the community all here today this evening. Police chief, former judge, two former members of the council, past President Kathleen McIntyre and Vice President Scott Barr, and many of your neighbors and family, so it's really nice to see that many people. And past Treasurer Linda Scheel. So it's really nice to see that many people here supporting you and everything you've done for your community. As council, we get the honor to sign a lot of accommodations in our community, and this one was a nice one to sign, this accommodation for you, Mr. Mayor. It is signed by all members of council: Council President McCullough and Vice President Tashnik. It talks about much of what the Vice President already summarized about your long history and tradition in this community, starting in 1988, before I was born.[240.01][240.01](LAUGHING). And you were appointed as a... You were appointed to the Planning Commission by former Mayor Robert Bennett, and serving through the council, serving as our mayor, and most recently as the chairman of the Brownfield Commission. So it is an honor, on behalf of all council, to present this accommodation, and thank you for your service to our community. The city of Livonia is a great community because of everything you've done for our city. Thank you, sir.[268.52][268.52](APPLAUSE).
I also wanted to, on behalf of the County of Wayne, County Commissioner Terry Morecki could not join us tonight, but she asked that I also share with you. We have accommodation from the county as well, and she said that she and Mark both send their love and appreciation to you, Mayor.[288.83][288.83](APPLAUSE). We're going to invite Mrs. Scheel up to the podium just to say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Tashnik and council members. I also had the pleasure of serving on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority with Jack. So on behalf of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, I would like to thank Jack Engelbrethson for his years of leadership and for being a mentor to all who have served on our commission. Jack, we thank you and Ceni for your many years of dedicated service to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the benefit of our city, and we wish you the best of health and happiness in all that you continue to do. Thank you.[333.75][333.75](APPLAUSE).
Well, I think it's picture time, Mayor, and if you'd like to say a few words, you may as well.[345.28][345.28](LAUGHING).
I'm not accustomed to standing at this spot.[362.53][362.53](LAUGHING). Actually, those that know me know that you don't use the phrase "a few words" in my name in the same sentence.
That was my first mistake. I'm sorry.
But I have thought about this as the day was approaching, and I will have a few words, but I won't make it long. I've asked my wife, Ceni, to stand here with me because, as Mrs. Scheel said, you know, your spouse is very much a part of whatever it is you do in life, and particularly as it pertains to public service. Because at many times, it's a thankless job. Even when you're doing important work, it can be difficult. Your family makes sacrifices, and surely your spouse makes sacrifices. As you heard Council Vice President Tashnik say, Ceni and I have been hanging around for 66-plus years, and she started out as an Air Force wife and ended up in a lot of other capacities. But one thing that I want to make part of the record is that she was a wonderful First Lady, and she and her predecessors, Pat Kirksey and Janet Bennett, did a lot of things together for the betterment of our community. So I guess what I would say is that whatever recognition comes my way goes at least 50% this way, maybe a little over 50, because she'd move me out of the house, she'd get me on the way, she would engage in campaigns, some of yours. She would keep me from getting a swelled head, because, you know, in the position that you're in and some of the other positions of leadership in the city or any unit of government, there is the opportunity for that to happen. And I will tell you that when we left Washington, D.C., I was associated with a man there, a person in authority who had as his motto to serve with honor, not for honor. And I adopted that as my theme, my motto, not only in life, but most particularly as a public servant, because, you know, these titles never go away. Judge Kenny will always be Judge or Your Honor. We have to stay level-headed. I know that all of you are doing that. I want to wish you all good health and great success as you, as the next generation, take over and lead the city to wherever we go from here. Livonia's been very blessed over the years to have had honest government, people of integrity serving, and people that are serving for the right reason, and I'm sure that applies to each one of you as well. So thank you for this recognition. Ceni said that if we'd known it was going to be such a big deal, we'd have had our son and his wife come over, and it would have blown his mind.[619.54][619.54](LAUGHING). But be that as it may, we're just so grateful to see so many friends come here today to be with us at this particular moment, and I just want you and them to know how appreciative we are. And for those of you in the audience who are here for regular council business, I apologize for the fact that this has slowed up the evening, but we used to say, you know, you get to watch government at work, and it comes in many flavors, and this is one of them. So thank you all. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, friends.[667.35][667.35](APPLAUSE).
So I get to be there in the same night as I had?[673.01][673.01](LAUGHING). Laurie, you're a lucky official.
This is where we do the photo ops of the meetings, just to...
Got it.
And then a lot of people leave.
No, I said, "Then a lot of people..."
I figured you did.
Especially the young kids who come in.
Oh, I know that.[689.13][689.13](LAUGHING).
Okay, now we will get to the regular meeting, but welcome to the 1,992nd regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, scheduled to be held on Monday, May 20, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
We have six members present. Absent tonight is President Brandon McCullough. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on April 15, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Buzinski, support from Jolly. Any comments from the audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
The vote passes six to nothing, and the minutes are approved. The council has now set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on the agenda. It looks like we actually have revised regular meetings, meeting minutes from April 1st that we have to go over. Do I have a motion?
Move to...
Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jolly, support by Toy. Do I have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
The vote passes six-nothing, and those minutes are also approved. Now we have audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Come on up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. John Grisbeck, 11301 Hubble. Good to see all the members of the council and everybody in the audience. I'm not here to represent any organization or any committee or any commission or anything I might be attached to, just myself, nor am I here to speak for the drives that I'm here to talk to. I'm just a resident, and I came here because I was interested in promoting blood donation. Versity Blood has a blood drive May 13, the Livonia, now Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce, and you can go there, just versity.org, or Red Cross has them as well, and you can see all of their schedules for that. There's various donation sites throughout our community and surrounding communities. So that's the one thing I wanted to do today, and there was an agenda item, the Committee of the Whole, that I was interested in hearing about as well. I didn't know, and I apologize, or I probably would have wore a suit, to honor Mayor Engelbrethson. When I was 17, 18-years-old, I don't know the rate around when I was able to register to vote, I didn't really know who was running for mayor. I did respect highly Mayor Kirksey, and I got involved in Mayor Engelbrethson's campaign, and I just helped him a little bit. I think it was a nail-file thing, like passing something out at a school or something. And again, I didn't know who else was running. I didn't know any of his opponents at that time. He took me aside, and he was nicer to me, or is nicer and nicer than anybody I've ever met in political or community service, and I mean that to this day. And I just think he's a true gentleman, and I have such respect for him and his wife, how they've made a marriage work that long, I don't know, in this day and age, or any day and age.[929.13][929.13](LAUGHING). And my only wish is that I had done a little more for the community in his honor, because he's always been there. And he, behind the scenes, has done some things for me against tremendous odds, and he's always been supportive, no matter what I've ever done. So I didn't know that you were honoring tonight, otherwise, again, I would have dressed a little more formally, sorry, Mayor, through the council to the mayor, and nice seeing you as well, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grisbeck. Welcome.
Hi.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patty Rigio, and I live at 37204 Breton. The reason I'm here tonight is to request that accessible pedestrian signals be installed at all intersections along the Newburgh Corridor. I know that you're undergoing an evaluation of that, but specifically at the intersections of Newburgh and Seven and Newburgh and Pembroke. As you know, the city is in the process of reviewing traffic signals along Newburgh Road Corridor through the Signal Optimization and Signal Modernization Program. In reviewing the reports, there's a lot of data about traffic flow and emissions calculations and stuff like that, but I don't see anything that addresses pedestrian traffic or pedestrian signals, more specifically, signals for individuals who are blind or visually impaired. I'm asking the council to consider installing accessible pedestrian signals at all intersections during this modernization. Just to clarify, an accessible pedestrian signal is a device that communicates the information about walk and don't walk in a non-visual format. For example, it speaks it. This helps individuals who are blind and have low vision. The information given by the accessible pedestrian signal is the same information that visual and hearing communities receive, only it's in an accessible format. This format is very important to individuals who are visually impaired when trying to cross the street, but to be very clear, it benefits everybody. These signals give additional information to all pedestrians. Our daughter is legally blind. She's no longer able to drive. In the meantime, she's trying to maintain her independence. She's trying to walk our community and utilize her cane skills. But in our specific community, there are two intersections that are proving to be a real risk for her: Newburgh and Seven and Newburgh and Pembroke. Specifically, the intersection of Newburgh and Pembroke only has a traffic light. It does not even have pedestrian signals. This intersection is extremely difficult for anyone who is blind or visually impaired to cross, and quite frankly, it's a safety hazard. This intersection uses, also, is used by a lot of individuals who walk to the post office and walk to Greenmead to care for their community gardens.
Excuse me, ma'am, you have 20 seconds.
Thank you. In summary, I'd like to request that accessible pedestrian signals be installed at all intersections during the Newburgh Corridor, Newburgh Road Corridor, but specifically Newburgh and Seven and Newburgh and Pembroke. Also, there are two local agencies that may help with additional...
That's time.
...resources.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to direct Patty's comments over to law to explore what she's talking about in regards to accessibility on what we're looking at and see what we perhaps can do in contacting Wayne County, since those probably are county roads, I'm going to guess, if I'm correct. But, no? It's ours? Okay. I'm going to yield to my colleague that says they're ours, so I didn't realize that. But just so we get a jump on it, maybe, to take a look, my empathy with you, because there's a lot of folks that have problems not only seeing but walking, et cetera, and it would be of everyone, not only the hearing or sight impaired, but others as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. So this is one of the areas where, well, first and foremost, I think most, if not all of us, have in some way participated or volunteered or supported seedlings in Livonia. So this is something near and dear to our hearts as a community in general. What you're saying is perfectly reasonable, and I... We earlier tonight had the chair of the Livonia Traffic Commission in the audience here. The Livonia Traffic Commission is the one, along with Mr. Zalinsik as the city engineer, who really have the authority to do such a thing, and I'll make sure that I give them a call to follow through with this, and I'm sure some of my colleagues will as well, but Mr. Zalinsik is also listening here. And it's just one of those things where we, as a council, are not legally having the authority to direct traffic signals of any sort, but those powers are held elsewhere, and we'll make sure that they hear your message. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other audience communication?
Hi, I'm Roxanne. I'm their daughter, and I live at 37204 Breton. So as my mom said, I'm trying to get my independence and all that, but mainly, I'm trying to get a service dog to walk on... Mom, what's the road?
She's up here.
What's the road? What's the road? Seven and what?
Pembroke.
Yeah, Pembroke. So I'm trying to get my independence back by walking there, so that's it.
Okay. Are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Stay right here. Hi, my name is Ryan Rigio. I live at 37204 Breton, and what I'd like to say is that they're clearing between our subdivision and Seven My Road going south. They're going to put a new subdivision in there, I guess. So what I would like to have you consider is having a sidewalk put in there, and it'd be helpful for everybody, okay? Because right now, it's dirt, it's uphill, downhill, you know, and a lot of people walk into the street, and that's not good. So I'm asking you to consider putting a sidewalk in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name's Paul Miller. I live at 36781 Curtis Road. I am here also about the Newburgh bird improvements. I am legally blind, and I make... I probably average three trips from my home, and I live next to the Japanese-American school, which used to be the old Taylor Elementary. But I travel to the post office three days a week with certified mail, which is very important to be walked in rather than done via, by the mailman. I would benefit greatly from an audio crossing signal. I have enough sight where I can usually cross at Seven by traffic flow. Pembroke is... Sometimes it's really quiet, and sometimes it's pretty crazy there, but if there's no traffic flow, it's sometimes challenging to see... I can't see if it's red, green, or yellow, so it's challenging to know when to go across. It's also a very short light. If I'm not in... If I'm not out there in the street immediately, I sometimes am blocking some of the traffic. So it would be very beneficial there at the Pembroke location. And as I travel over to Bush's, there are other people in my neighborhood who are in my same boat. I have one neighbor who takes his suitcase to Bush's every Tuesday, and I run into him all the time there. So it's... We are not alone, and as a society, we are getting older and older. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Andre Van Hes. I live at 9019 Crown Street. For 212 days, we've been watching a genocide unfold on our phones. The U.S. government, our government, is complicit or proactive in supporting and funding this genocide. Why haven't you, our city council, voted on and passed a ceasefire resolution similar to those passed in cities around us and around the country? I would yield my time for you to respond.
Thank you. Do we have any other audience communication tonight? Council will respond during their time. Okay, seeing no more audience communication, we'll move on to some council announcements. I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware, there's a new data item for '15. We have a resident's response to a lot split. In addition, we will have a public hearing on May 13. We have two rezone requests to look at, and I'm going to now call on Councilmember Morgan to announce our retirees.
Yes, I would like to announce our 2024 retirees. It would be Kimberly Gaines, 39 years of service and seven months in the Housing Divisional, as the Housing Divisional Director. Like to wish her congratulations. And then we have Shaleen Polovich, 28 years as the Animal Control Officer. And then Mike Slater, 29 years, 11 months as Director of Finance. I'd like to wish all of them congratulations and health and a good future. Appreciate all their service. They've been excellent employees during that time, and we really appreciate their service. Also, I'd like to mention, since I didn't... I wasn't able to get my two cents in there with Mayor Engelbrethson, I'd just like to thank him for his service, and he's an amazing person, and we really appreciate his service, and just thank you very much.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple things. I'd like to also... I've known Jack Engelbrethson for an awful long time in my service here at City Hall, and remember when he became a planning commissioner and did all kinds of community work. He had just moved in and was active to get involved, and that he did. He served not only his country and the Air Force, but services, I think, his middle name. He just, you know, created much leadership and had quite a few challenges as a mayor, as mayors will, and he's just shining example of some wisdom that he gives others to look at both sides of the aisle, to look at both kinds of attitudes rather than just one way. He engages both sides, and that's what a good leader does. And I'm sorry that we didn't get time to, you know, express some of those things while he was here, but as my colleague said, timing is tight, I know, and we've got to get on with our meeting. I also have a couple resolutions I'd like to offer forward. I'd like to wish all of them congratulations and health and a good future. Appreciate all their service. They've been excellent employees during that time, and we really appreciate their service. Also, I'd like to mention, since I didn't, I wasn't able to get my two cents in there with Mayor Engelbrechtson, I'd just like to thank him for his service, and he's an amazing person, and we really appreciate his service, and just thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple things. I'd like to also, I've known Jack Engelbrechtson for an awful long time in my service here at City Hall, and remember when he became a Planning Commissioner and did all kinds of community work. He had just moved in and was active to get involved, and that he did. He served not only his country and the Air Force, but services, I think, his middle name. He just, you know, created much leadership and had quite a few challenges as a mayor, as mayors will. And he's just shining example of some wisdom that he gives others to look at both sides of the aisle, to look at both kinds of attitudes rather than just one way. He engages both sides, and that's what a good leader does. And I'm sorry that we didn't get time to, you know, express some of those things while he was here, but as my colleague said, timing is tight, I know, and we got to get on with our meeting. I also have a couple resolutions I'd like to offer forward, Madam President, and those are, I, you know, put them on my phone, which may tape me until next week. You know, when I had pneumonia for the last almost month and was unable to be with you, and thank you, I got a lot of different communications from residents, and one of them, one or two of them stood out. The one that stood out the most was when we get into a gathering place, like we do at Music Under the Stars, or, you know, we're outside, some people, and not all of us, because I don't smoke, but, or vape, but a lot of people are vaping and smoking in those areas, and it bothers folks. So I'm going to ask if we could, I know others have put up signage to look at, look at that kind of behavior, if you will, and just to remind people, it's not real appropriate to, you know, kind of light up right next to somebody and start smoking, even though it's outside, and the use of tobacco products. So I'd like to refer that to law, just to see, I tried to skim our laws. I don't see anything in there, if you will, and I know I called our clerk, she, I believe she did too, and, you know, it may be helpful to those of us that come to those different outside events this summer and this spring. Also, and I got to send this to the rest of you, I got this just the other day. It's a, it's a little mailbox, and it's a flag. And a scout troop did this, and I and Lori, our clerk also, we've been in contact with the Eagle Scout leader, Bill. They do miraculous things in our community, as we all know. They have a lot of Eagle Scouts in Livonia and such. And they put together this flag box, and I was talking to Scott, our colleague here, before, and some of the VFW posts have boxes where we can do the retired flags, not everyone, and also our fire department has. But this would just be so awesome. I mean, it's a big flag, and it was a real standout. So I'm hoping that we could do maybe a little fundraiser for it and get some scouts involved. That's what Lori and I were talking about. I was picking her brain, and perhaps, perhaps we could do something like that. So just a point of information I want to share with my colleagues, because I've been ill and I haven't gotten to talk to each one of you, so I thought I'd bring it up and see where your thoughts are, and I'll send you that picture as well. Thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence as well.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Were you making a motion or referring to committee?
I would, on which one? On the-
First.
The law? Yeah. I would like to make a motion to refer that to law.
I'll second her referral.
Motion by Toy, seconded by Jolly on that referral to the Law Committee. Or to the law, sorry. Mr. Jolly.
For the referral, we have to-
Oh, that's right.
Go to the audience and then take a vote.
Sorry. Do we have any audience comments on Ms. Toy's motion? Any comments from council? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Motion passes six nothing. Now, Mr. Tashnik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mayor Engelbrechtson is not in the auditorium any longer. He's, I'm sure, got other things to do this evening. But I'll say the one thing that always came to mind with my interactions with him is they were not in traditional city spaces. I ran into him over the years, probably five to 10 times in the garden section at Home Depot, and he was, I don't want to say dirty, but he had clearly been working and, you know, using your hands and getting on with it. And other times, when I would go running through the neighborhood, he lived in my neighborhood, he was always out in front of the house doing something, whether it was painting a door or trimming the bushes or something like that. So he was clearly an individual who was active, and, you know, it's one of those things where we've heard many stories as a council, being of the more recent crop. A lot of us didn't get to see, get to see his full glory as mayor, but he always was diligent, and he was very thorough in regards to evaluating brownfield development proposals that came to the city. You know, I, we didn't always, you know, vote on those in the way that he would like. I know sometimes maybe we should have, sometimes we didn't, and, you know, but he definitely gave us a lot to learn and education in the process. So I want to thank him for his years of service, and it's, you know, it's another one of these people who stepping away from the city will leave a void, but a void that I'm sure Livonia is capable of filling. On a different note, talking about somebody who's stepping out of their public role, we also have somebody who is both, well, one person who's stepping out of a role, I think somewhat happily. Our longtime city attorney, Mr. Paul Bernier, who has served Livonia in many different ways. One is our Wayne County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for many years, and then is our city attorney for the last, I think, four or five years.
Six.
Six?
Twelve years total in the City Law Department.
Okay.
It's hard to believe.
So Paul is leaving us, but he's traveling to the far distance of the parking lot to the 16th District Court to become our magistrate. We want to thank him for his years of service, but he's not really, he's leaving having to deal with us, but he's not leaving the city per se, or, you know, leaving the residents per se. But thank you, Paul. It's been a pleasure. But with that being said-
I appreciate it. What a night to leave out when we have Jack Engelbrechtson, and I'm almost embarrassed to even mention, it's kind of funny, Tim Kenny, who was here for Mayor Engelbrechtson, was my first mentor at the prosecutor's office, he didn't even stick around for my last day here. So, but I want to, honestly, I want to thank council members. This council and every other council has been wonderful to me. All the mayors that I've worked for have been great. The city's been great to me, so thank you very much.
Knowing you the way that we do, Paul, it's almost as if you planned Mayor Engelbrechtson's goodbye ceremony on the same day as yours, so you can just kind of slide out the back door.
Kind of wanted to walk out one door and walk in the other door, but-
Yeah. So with that being said, though, we do have a new city attorney who's joined us recently, Carter Fisher, and we've heard great things, and he is a land use expert who's going to be put to good use planning the community for the next, well, I don't know that he's going to be planning it for the next 50 years or so, but he's going to set us up for success for the next 50 years or so. And I'll say, you know, he's related to another person that we know and we've served with very closely over the years. You know, I'm going to go on a limb and say, being raised by a Harvard lawyer, we should expect a lot out of you, and we're going to hold you accountable to show us just that. So welcome aboard, sir.
Two Harvard lawyers, mom and dad.
Listen, so you better not make any mistakes. We're going to let them know.
However, Michigan law.
No blue.
Right, Ms. Toy?
Just as good.
But welcome.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Jolly. Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Two things. One, Clement Circle neighborhood, if you live in the neighborhood, the Clement Circle Pool Park area right there, the parking lot has been under construction for quite a long time. So thank you to our city attorney, Todd Zalinski, and his team. Thank you to Nagel Paving and their team, and Bellagio Homes, Bellagio and Infinity Homes, which is the neighborhood next door. That's, long story short, they built a neighborhood, and that's adjacent to one of our Livoney parks, and Bellagio Homes and Infinity Homes, in concert with our awesome engineering department, worked out a plan, and they extended that parking lot for the park. And the pool, if you remember before, was a very small parking lot. Now it's a rather large parking lot, and this morning, my house started shaking about 8:00 a.m., 7:30 when they're out there paving the parking lot. So it's really awesome, and I know the residents of Clement Circle really do appreciate it. So thanks to all that were doing that. And then also, you know, if you sit on city council, you're involved in government in any capacity, especially if you're an elected official, you really rely on your city attorney. He keeps you out of trouble. He advises you on all sorts of things, and I've been fortunate to serve with Paul Bernier since I first got on council many, many years ago in 2019. I didn't have as much gray hair back then. But it's been an honor serving with you. You've done a great job for the city, and there's a lot of work that the City Law Department does for such a large city like ours. There's all sorts of things going on, and the City Department does a lot of work, and Paul has been at the helm of that for many years and doing a good job. It's nice to see a much younger partner now, with a nice beard. We match. So Mr. Fisher, looking forward to serving with you. Your father has done a lot of great work in the city of Livonia, and it's nice to see that we poached you from Wayne County and brought you over here. So looking forward to serving with you, and thanks for everything you've done for the community, Paul.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bozinski.
I know. Busy, busy night here, lots to say, so I'll try to keep it short. Thank you, Paul, for your work, and Mayor Engelbrechtson as well. To our resident communication, I just want to say, I share your concerns and your, and I think it's important that residents speak out and advocate for things that they care about and that mean a lot to them. I know myself personally, I feel overwhelmed by the things that are going on in the world at large, and I've used my energy and time to focus on the things that I can make a direct impact on here in Livonia, and that's the work that I really spend a lot of time in and try to focus on, and do the best I can. And one of the ways that I try to do that is hosting monthly coffee hours. I do have a coffee hour this coming Saturday, May 11th. I host them at the Civic Center Library at 11 o'clock. This month, it'll be held in the auditorium, and we'll be talking about the developments that are happening in the city over at the new senior center, rec center, and here at the city center. My colleague, Councilman Donavick, will be joining as our senior colleague, who has experience representing, being the council representative on the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, and as council liaison for the new senior center project. So I'd invite any of you and all of you to come and join. If you want to talk about those issues, learn more, or I take questions on any issue that we're dealing with here in council. I also wanted to say that it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I wanted to recognize our teacher here on the dais, Vice President Tashnik, for her work as a teacher. If you don't know, council is a part-time job, so we all have full-time jobs, but I think Councilwoman Tashnik is especially admirable, because she works in the most real, the most real full-time job that we have, having to be in a classroom every single day from 6:30 to 3:00, and serving the kids in our community at Churchill High School, Go Chargers, and then serving the community here in council as well. So to you and to all of the teachers here in Livonia and in the world, the work that you do is really important and makes a difference in everyone's lives. So thank you.
Madam President.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you. I don't want to hold up the meeting anymore, but it's been a big night, but I did want to say to Paul, I've worked with a lot of attorneys in my life and in my elected service, and Paul, you're definitely an outstanding attorney, and have always been fair, direct with all of us, and impartial, and I appreciate that, and you're to be commended. Thank you so much for all your service you've done for all of us and in this great community that we all try and represent day to day, and thank you again and again. And to Mr. Fisher, welcome. Wear bulletproof vest, and you'll be fine.
Thank you for the kind words.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, Paul, I just wanted to say thank you for all your service. I mean, I've known you for many, many years. When I was a policeman, I leaned on you as the Wayne County Prosecutor for any questions or any issues I had, and you're just a wealth of knowledge, and it's sad to lose you from this position, but I understand completely. So I'd just like to simply say thank you for your service and really appreciate you. You've been a great friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple last-minute announcements. We do have some birthdays coming up this week. Mayor Brosnan's birthday is actually Wednesday, May 8th, and Chief of Staff Dave Varga's birthday is Thursday, May 9th. And since we last met, I believe Mr. Jolly had a birthday as well, so happy belated to you.
Thank you.
The big 21.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Bozinski, for shouting out the teachers. I know some of my students do watch, because they report back, but they have their AP Stats exam tomorrow, so they better get to bed and get studying, so.
Golden delicious.
That's right. All right, we're going to move on to our agenda now. Reports from the mayor and other city officials. Looks like we have communication from the Department of Finance dated April 3, 2024, forwarding departmental purchase report for the month ending March 2024, and I believe we can just do a receive and file on that. All right, next. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 11 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on April 15th and determined to be non-controversial. Do I have a motion?
Madam Vice President?
Mr. Jolly.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Jolly, support by Morgan. Do we have any comments from council on the consent agenda? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. Consent agenda passes six nothing. We will now move on to unfinished business. We've had a couple of committee meetings since then. I'm going to start with, we had a committee of the whole meeting on April 22, 2024. The subject matter of that was addressing continuing efforts towards the improvement of the zoning board of appeals administration and processes. We met to look at hardware, software, consolidations of systems, processes, clarifications on which departments take care of each part of the appeal case process, and clarifying also to, as to who is responsible for what part of the process. At that meeting, we had councilmembers McCullough, myself, Bozinski, Donavick, and Morgan, and also city officials, Mike Fisher, Assistant City Attorney, Jerome Hannah, our Inspection Director, and Rob Druzwiki, Governmental Affairs. It was determined that we would leave this in committee to revisit as a future date while we're investigating some of the issues with that. So this, for now, will remain in committee. Item 13, Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meetings, we had two, April 17th and April 24th. The subject matter here is the 2022 Facility Condition Assessment and Space Needs. I'm going to let Mr. Donavick speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is a very dense topic, and I, in the sake of time, I don't want to go on and on, but it is very important. So if you'd like to learn more information about it, I would refer you to our website, the city of Livonia website. Go to the agenda for the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee. Those meetings are April 17th and April 24th. There is a ton of information in there. All the information that we, as council members, receive from our consultant and the administration is all public record, and it is in this packet. So I'm going to skim through this briefly. The Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committees took place Wednesdays, April 17th and April 24th. Myself, the Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Jim Jolly, and our council member, Carrie Bozinski, were present, along with all other members of council at various times. Council President McCullough, Vice President Tashnik, and Councilmember Mr. Morgan, and Madam Toy, Councilwoman Toy. City officials consisted of the mayor, fire chief, both of our city attorneys, our, both of our city finance directors, one just retired and a new one has taken over, Mr. Tormin, our Planning and Economic Development Director, Don Roroff, Director of DPW, Ted Davis, Superintendent Parks and Rec, Mr. Druzwiki, Government Affairs, and then representatives from Plant Moran Realpoint. Plant Moran Realpoint is a consulting firm that the city of Livonia has hired to consult on our behalf for all of our real estate needs. We had, this was a total of three meetings thus far. The first meeting we've already read out, but this is the second and third meeting. It mainly consisted of discussions primarily on the four topics, site, opportunity analysis, market feasibility, financial feasibility, and strategy and implementation. And this is specifically on the town center property that the city of Livonia owns, and how much land we could use for city buildings, and how much of that land could be redeveloped to the Vision 21 master plan. The third meeting primarily focused on financing that vision, excuse me, and if we could afford it, we determined that a public-private partnership would not be financially feasible to fund a city hall or police department and fire station one. However, funding would be okay using existing funds, as that is a much better financial option. In late 2022, the city transitioned to a Medicare Advantage program for post-65 retirees, which has provided significant cost savings that can be shifted to fund the debt service to bond for a new city hall. The premiums are less than the city initially expected for self-insuring, and those savings will be roughly $2.4 million. So in 2022, when the city council shifted over to the Medicare Advantage program, we did not know how much the savings would be, but after our financial department has conducted their analysis, we'd be saving roughly $2.4 million a year. So it is a recommendation of the administration to take that savings, and that could be the debt service for the bond for a new city hall building. We determined that the city hall is no longer financially responsible to continue to invest in- to invest in, in the aging city hall. At the first meeting, we determined that the price was roughly somewhere over $35, $36 million over the next 10 years to manage the existing city hall and also update any capital improvements, and it would cost roughly the same amount to build a new city hall. So there's a lot of numbers there. Let's see here, trying to skim through. A very important meeting will take place. If you'd like to participate, the bond meeting will take place here at City Hall on the second floor, May 15th, and that is a committee meeting, and Miller Canfield, who is our bond representative, will be presenting how that bond process works and some of the initial numbers. So again, if you'd like to participate and learn more about that, that meeting will be Wednesday, May 15th, and that will be here at City Hall on the second floor. PMR Representatives, Plant Moran, RealPoint, would like to be hired for Phase 3 to continue to engage and plan to build the new police department and redevelopment of the five fire station on town center for the master plan. PMR would provide owner representative work and develop advisory services. PMR would work to develop civic site master plan and oversee design. As of now, this item will continue to be an ongoing discussion and will remain in committee, and I'd like to remind all members of the public again that this item is open to the public. Any meetings, you can attend and learn more about this future plan to redevelop the corner of Five Mile and Farmington. I could keep on going, but I'm not going to bore us all night long. So, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Donavick. It's exciting stuff going on. All right, we will now move to the unfinished business. We'll start with Agenda Item 14, which is a request for council approval on a proposed lot split, Department of Assessment, for the property located at the northeast corner of Seven Mile and Merriman in the southwest quarter of Section 2, 19200 Merriman Court, and to waive lot depth and lot area issue relative to Parcel 2.
Madam President.
Mr. Jolly.
At this time, I'd like to offer an approving motion.
Support.
Motion by Jolly, support by Mr. Donavick. The petitioner would like to address council.
Hello, my name is Nina Jo, and I am a family friend of Tony Vacrue, 37749 Pickford Drive. We were here three weeks ago for our scheduled board meeting, but there weren't enough councilmen to vote. I did leave copies, a folder full of letters that Mr. Vacrue wrote to the councilmen, along with neighborhood letters of support. There were two neighbors that were directly affiliated with us that, one, we couldn't get a hold of, the neighbor to the north, Mr. Vacrue tried numerous times to knock on the door, there was no response. And the neighbors to the east, the wife, who is the homeowner, was initially somewhat supportive. However, her husband did approach Mr. Vacrue numerous times about purchasing half the property, so we never got a final answer of support nor denial from them. This is Mr. Vacrue.
There's somebody else in line.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Grace Schlecker, 19250 Merriman Court, property directly north of 192500, 200. We oppose the lot split. We live right next door. We are longtime Livonia residents. We've lived here 25-plus years. We appreciate having the large green space right next to us with lots of trees, kind of like city, country in the city kind of environment. I reviewed the video from the study meeting, and I would like to make observations and comments. It is a rural-type street. Most of the homes on the, are larger lots. Historically, the smaller lots on the west side of the street, they sold their property to build the apartments at the corner of Seven Mile and Merriman years ago. It was mentioned in the study meeting, the owner property, of the owner of the property reached out to neighbors. We have not. Sounds like they tried. We have not had a conversation with the owner, and again, we are the property right north and share a property line. My understanding, it's been for a while, so it's been six months that he's owned this property and never reached out to us or tried a letter in the mailbox, something. It has been, the property on the corner has been empty for several years, and previous renters in that property have been horrible. They currently just rented that property, and not, it's not for sale. So it's, we're fearing that it's going to be the same thing, and they're going to use that second lot for the same thing. I mean, it is renovated beautifully, and we're concerned that a build on that property will take too long because it took over two years to renovate that property. They'll have to remove some beautiful old trees and make room for a home. And it is, would be a smaller lot, smaller than the ones on the west side of the street. We oppose to have that, a smaller lot, especially since it's so close, it's right on our property line, and for all the information I mentioned before. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Counsel, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. If I may go to Mr. Tormina. Mr. Tormina, is this the lot split that is deficient in its depth?
It's deficient both in area and lot depth. Your action this evening would waive the lot area requirement. The lot depth is only, is something that only the ZBAs could weigh, should the site be petitioned for a building site.
And unfortunately, I haven't been able to get over there and look at this. Are most of the lots large in that area? Am I, I'm hearing some of the comments. Thank you, Jim, gave me his phone to look at here. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I just, you know, I'm a lucky person. I live on a large lot in Livonia. And because back in the 60s, they wouldn't let my dad lot split it because whatever reason, I don't know. I was too busy in high school studying, of course. And I was just being funny. But anyhow, in all seriousness, you know, I think part of Livonia's charm is some of these larger lots with the trees and, you know, and the space that they create in our city. It brings a uniqueness to our area. And I'm seeing like four or five lot splits, you know, on this agenda tonight, and I'm concerned about that because I don't want to keep, you know, sizing down Livonia. Part of the charm in this community is, like I said, some of these larger lots that, you know, some of them make sense that we divide them, but when you start getting deficiencies and neighbors that are having problems with it, I become concerned about that as one councilperson. And part of the attractiveness, again, in a major city like we are, are some of these large lots, and particularly the trees. Aren't we known as a tree city or whatever? And anyhow, I just had to voice that tonight because I see quite a few of these splits on here, so I'm a little, a little taken back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Tormina, can you please remind me of the lot widths across the street, specifically 19205, 19233, 271, et cetera? I hate to put you on the spot. And while you're looking for those, the reason why I ask that question is a lot of these lots, parcels across the street to the west, are very similar, where a lot of these homes were, were split up, and they're kind of unique lot sizes. I wouldn't normally be in favor of this type of split, however, it's not unique to this road, this street. There are a lot of houses on this street, directly across the street from this home, that have very similar lot sizes. And I'd like to remind everybody that in the City Livonia, if the petitioner wants to, they can remove all their trees on their house, on their, on their property. I'm completely sympathetic to wanting to keep trees next door. I absolutely love that and the charm of living in that kind of small-town feel next to trees and the wildlife. But the reality is, is as private property owners in your community, if you want to cut down every tree on your property, you have the right to do it. You own the trees, it's your private property, you pay property taxes for it, with the exception of removing trees in the right way. So the petitioner, regardless if council approves this or not, could cut down all those trees if they so chose to. Lot widths, typically speaking in the City Livonia, are roughly, and they vary, but roughly about 60 feet wide by about 120 feet wide. This lot is 117, almost 118 feet wide by 88 feet deep, so there's a deficiency of roughly 32 feet. Now, as Mr. Tormina explained earlier, we as a council don't have the authority to waive the, the building envelope. If they want to build a house, if council approves this lot split, the petitioner would have to go to the ZBA and seek relief for hardship and a whole list of other things that the ZBA would do to build a home. But in terms of a lot split, I'm okay with it. Again, there's, it's harmonious to the road, to that street in particular. There's multiple houses on that street that have these kind of unique lot sizes, and we're talking about deficiency of 32 feet in the rear yard. I don't like the pool so close to the property line. You know, it would, it would be nice if you would maybe think about removing that pool. I think that'd be a gesture of good faith to the community and maybe help you in the future of building a house potentially because you have a little bit more flexibility now. But I'm not sure if we have that authority as a council, maybe more of just a recommendation. But I, all in favor in this. And Mr. Tormina, if you had any of those lot widths across the street, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So the lot directly across the street from the proposed building site here, which is 19205 Merriman Court, the width of that lot is roughly 80 feet. The depth is approximately 82 and a half feet. As you continue north along Merriman Court on the west side of the road, many of the lots are the same size as that one, about 80 to 82 and a half feet in width and 82 and a half feet in depth. So smaller than the lot that is proposed here. And the larger lots exist on the north, excuse me, on the east side of Merriman Court, and then at the corners, this lot, and the ones directly across the street, which I believe the resident is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'm all set now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counsel?
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Jolly.
Mr. Tormina, so recognizing that I did offer an approving for this, and I had some questions initially when this came before us, not the last meeting, but the meeting before you were here. I'm looking at the map, and with the resident who lives to the west, what I would be concerned about is the depth of this particular potential lot, being shallow as it is, would a house, in your experience, right, you don't, you can't predict the future, right? But with your experience, any house that would be built there would have to be closer to the roadway, correct?
It would have to be closer to the road than the adjacent house to the north. I can't speak to the house that's on this property currently, but certainly the one to the north, this house would have to move forward of that, and in all likelihood require variances and setbacks in order to be constructed.
Yeah, I think, so, you know, my, my initial motion to approve here was made based on the lot size. You know, I don't think I'm going to be supporting this because as the resident indicated here, not only, you know, Mr. Donavick answered all of the things that she brought up in terms of the trees and the rural nature and the size of the lots and all this kind of stuff, potentially a house that would be built here would break the sightline from the person's house, and it would fall drastically closer to the road than almost, if not every single house on Merriman Court on that east side of the road. So I'll just, I'll say, although I, I made the motion, I don't, I do not believe I'll be supporting this matter. Thank you.
Are you looking to withdraw?
For sake of our meeting and the sanity of everybody involved, I'm not going to withdraw my support because a colleague will just make the support, but I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Jolly brings up a good point about the setback from, from Merriman Court. As Mr. Tormina said, the homes to the east are roughly 82 feet, give or take, deep, and this one would be roughly 88 feet deep. And there's a long list of homes to the west that have similar setbacks from Merriman Court. I imagine that they're going to be roughly 20, 25 feet, give or take. Don't quote me on that. So that's, again, fairly standard. You can go through a number of our communities, and they'll be 25, 35 feet off of the, the road curb. So again, I, I'll continue to initiate my, that I'm, I'm okay with this, and I think that it is harmonious with a lot of the other houses on that road. Again, sympathetic to the neighbor to the north, but just trying to be fair here, there's a lot of houses along Merriman Court that, that are just like this, and I'm okay with that. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Counsel, any other comments? Okay. All right. Any other audience communication on this matter? I just want to double-check with Mr. Bernier on this, or Mr. Fisher. This will require a supermajority vote, I believe, which is five, so just to make everyone aware. I just wanted to concur that that is true. Okay. And that will also apply to Items 15 and 16, which are also lot splits. All right, Madam Clerk, please take the vote. Councilmember Bozinski?
No.
Sir, was that a no?
Yes.
Counselmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Jolly?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tasnik? No. Motion does not pass. 2-4. All right, we will be moving on to item, Agenda Item Number 15, Request for Council Approval on a Proposed Lot Split, Department of Assessment. The property located south of Eight Mile Road and east of Merriman Road, just north of Pembroke, in the northwest quarter of Section 2, 19831 Purling Brook Road, and to waive the lot width-to-depth ratio relative to Parcel A. In addition, we did receive email communication from a resident. Just want to note that was received and placed on file for council. Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Donavick.
I will offer an approving.
Do I have support?
Support.
Motion by Donavick, support by Morgan. Do we have any comments from council?
Madam Vice President.
Mr. Donavick.
This is very standard. It's one of these unique state laws that says that a lot can't be four-to-one ratio. It's kind of a unique and difficult thing to wrap your mind around, but it's fairly standard, and we're not rezoning this property. It meets all of the requirements for square footage. It'd be 90 feet wide along, along Bethany Road, Bethany Street, and I'm trying to figure out how deep it would be. I think 125 feet deep. So it'd be a rather large lot, 90 feet wide by 125 feet. So fairly standard, but there's this intricate lawyer thing they do for four-to-one ratio, so.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mr. Morgan?
I'm sorry, isn't that along Purling Brook, or you're, you're talking about Bethany?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, we're on the Purling Brook.
All right.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Tormina. Mr. Tormina, how, how are the other lot sizes along on Item 15 here? Are they within those sizes?
There is consistency with respect to lot sizes in, in many respects. This is, this is a unique arrangement, only in that it's creating a flag lot. And this is the Purling Brook split, correct? I just wanted to make sure.
Because of the confusion, that's on me.
You confused me there for a second. It's creating a lot that does have a depth that's more than four times its width, which is the reason why you're considering this item. That aspect of it is somewhat unique. The lot size on the smaller parcel B is, is relatively consistent with some of the other lots in that neighborhood. There is a, not, not a, they're not all as large as the back lot that's being created. There are some that are smaller, some that are larger, but relatively consistent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the largeness or whatever of it.
Yeah, I wish I could show you on the map. I don't have my computer connected.
Scott just showed me. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel?
I'm just going to say that I, everything I said stands, just change the address around.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Do we have any comments from the audience on this Agenda Item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Hold on.
Please come to the podium. Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Two minutes.
My name is Charles Hopala, and I live right next door to this lot here on 19991 Purling Brook. All these lots that have been sold, my not included, were all 5/8s of an acre, rural farms. And I noticed on their lot, what do you call it, parcel, parcel B, it doesn't come to that size. It's only, I think, a half an acre or something. So is that lot separate somehow? So why isn't it 5/8s? That's what I'm wondering.
You want, okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Torremin.
Parcel B is, would measure 100 by 240, which is 24,000 square feet. That's a little larger than a half an acre and is about 9,000 square feet more than what the RUF zoning requires as a minimum, which is 15,000 square feet.
That's it. The whole area was rezoned, right? Because it's not rezoned, it's rural farms still.
Sir, you have to address the chair.
Yes.
So, Mr. Torremin, if you'd like to go answer.
It has not been rezoned anytime recently. The RUF zoning has been in place, well, I'm not sure exactly how long, but certainly for more than 25 years.
Thank you. Mrs. Buzinski.
So to clarify, Mr. Torremin, both parcel A and B in this reconfiguration will remain RUF.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They still remain RUF.
Sir, do you have any comments?
Even though it's not 5/8s acre.
Correct.
So, I don't know. I don't understand it myself.
Mr. Jolly.
I thought it would have to be a special, if you've got a special size, it would be special voting on it.
Mr. Torremin, I'm sorry, just to try and get a direct answer for you here, how large does a lot have to be to be RUF?
15,000.
15,000, and the newly proposed lot would be 24,000?
That is correct.
And the remaining lot would be what?
Parcel A would measure 63,162 square feet.
Okay, so both lots would be well over the minimum for rural-urban farm zoning classification?
That is correct. The only reason you're reviewing this again is the lot with the depth ratio is not being complied with. The parcel A depth of the lot is more than four times greater than its width.
Okay.
And that is a statutory requirement. It's part of the Land Division Act. Our ordinance recognizes that limitation. It's part of the state act, and we adhere to those requirements. So that's why it requires council's vote, a minimum of five votes.
Because you're an oracle of knowledge with Livonia land, there are many lots that find themselves in the same situation in Livonia, correct? Particularly off of Merriman Road, where there are narrow lots that are very deep? Is that correct?
There are many RUF zoning properties that have, that are, that exceed that one-to-four ratio between the width and the depth. Yes, it's very common.
Okay. I'm curious as to why this width-to-depth exists, but I won't ask you that because it's probably not.
A bunch of lawyers thought it up.
Yeah. Things that make us interested, right?
I think it actually, it stems mostly from the subdividing of rural properties, many of which might be several hundred feet if a sewer is only available along the front part of the street or no sewers available. It was to prevent these extremely long ribbon lots from being created, mostly in rural areas that didn't have the public utilities. So I think it probably stems from that more than anything.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President.
Ms. Toy.
If I may, to the petitioner, sir, it's meeting all the requirements for RUF, or rural-urban farm. So that's what we're struggling with to talk about here. It's just the way they're configured, and because of state law, we have to do it a certain way. And that's what the petitioner has presented to us. So it does meet the standards. I know.
I don't quite understand it myself, but the other lots around the neighborhood are all 5/8s acre minimum, which is lots, this is a lot, that lot's a lot smaller. And I don't know if it makes a difference if somebody's pulling our leg here or what doing this.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can help clear this up. You said you're at 19991, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So the current parcel that's there, it's very large. It's 423 feet deep and 200 feet wide.
Yeah.
So in other words, what they're doing is they're taking, they're splitting it down the middle. It's now a frontage of 100 and 100.
Yeah, I noticed.
Okay? And I think, I believe your lot is probably, from what I can see here, right around 100 feet of frontage.
100, yeah.
Is that correct? So the secondary lot is going to be 240 deep, and I believe your lot, from what I can see, is right around there.
My lot is 300, no, 285, I'm sorry. 285 deep.
Okay, so it'd be a little bit, it'd be about 40 feet less than yours.
Mine needs this.
But the one that would be abutting your property line is going to be 423 feet deep and 100 wide.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that for you, that it is conforming to the neighborhood. And while staying RUF, yours is probably RUF also, right? So nothing is being shrunk down, any, really, any smaller than your lot except a slight amount. So it's still going to be very large lots conforming with that area, if that helps out.
Yeah, I just thought it had to be approved.
Okay.
For downsizing it from 5/8s to whatever is half.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Jim Harper, 30560 Pembroke. I wrote the letter. And my concern is, are you voting on it, right? Okay. Is what's going to be done with the property? If you.
So, Madam Chair.
Mr. Jolly, yeah.
So if this property is divided in this way, then they could use it as any way they could properly use a rural-urban farm lot.
Okay.
That might mean, and probably means, building a residence on it, is what I would presume. They would not be able to do any non-residential features on the property.
Because, as they stated in the letter, there's history on it, and it took years to kind of get it cleaned up to, it's better than it was. But I just see it all starting all over again. And when these people move in, they, the city comes by, the city comes by, they just, they get away with it, get away with it. Takes forever to get them to stop.
Thank you, sir.
That's my concern.
I understand your concern, and you just raised a question with me.
Mr. Jolly.
Mr. Burnier.
Yes, sir.
Is this the property that we received numerous complaints in regards to wood chips and stuff being stored on the lot?
I don't know if it is or isn't.
Okay.
I know there was a, there was a house back there in that area that was. I can't tell you it is or it isn't.
I don't recall the address myself. Sir, is this, is this what you're speaking about?
Yes.
They're operating some kind of forestry service and had wood chips and logs and all this kind of stuff on that?
Yeah, I watched your, sorry, I watched your, I wanted to come to the study meeting, but Dan from the code enforcement, he said, well, he thought it was a closed meeting. I didn't really need to come. I would have said something then. But when Mr. Tomonovic purchased the other two lots right behind me, you don't have a map of the area? You do, I think. Anyhow, a couple of years ago, he had mentioned he has plans for it, and in the study meeting, he's not sure what he wants to do with the property. Me even made a comment, maybe I'll sell it to a builder because I'm tired of paying taxes on it. So if he started paying taxes on the property, why does he want to acquire more property to pay taxes on? You kind of understand where I'm getting at?
No, we understand you. Mr. Torremin, do you have, is the petitioner here? That might be helpful.
Do we see the petitioner? Appears not.
Mr. Jolly, to answer your question, though, the answer is yes, given the name you mentioned.
And there is no petitioner here tonight? You know.
No.
Yeah, I, at this time, I.
I just, like I said, I'm just concerned, it's been, you know, we've been here for 40 years, and depending on what goes back there, I mean, if it's some nice houses or something, not little ones like you're talking to on the Merriman Court, but put a few houses, but the way it's kind of getting chopped up, how are you going to do that with the property?
Okay. Sir, your time is up, but thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I know Councilmember Jolly has a point, so I'll try to be quick. Mr. Torremin, there is a, an adjacent parcel, again, a unique, because looking at Pembroke Road, there's a lot of unique parcels all up and down that would be consistent with this one. Behind, how big is that parcel behind the 19833 parcel? Which is kind of weird. It's tucked back there. It's got an access point off of maybe Pembroke Avenue.
That is under the name Tomonovic, and our geographical information system shows it has a land area of roughly 37,565 square feet.
So it's probably roughly about 197 feet wide and, you know, I don't know, maybe two or seven hundred feet deep. I guess my point is, is if you just look up and down Purling Brook Road, again, there's a lot of unique lots that all kind of meet the same kind of funky design layout. But to the resident's point, with RUF, they would not be allowed to do any commercial, they're not supposed to do any type of commercial activity. It sounds like there is some history there, but in terms of the actual rule itself, I'm okay with waiving the four-to-one ratio on the premise of the actual rule itself. I'm okay with that. Now, the enforcement, I think it's, we all know about it now, and I think the administration could take note to go step up enforcement for any sort of commercial activity back there. But RUF, they're only allowed to build homes. You can't build a storage company back there or some sort of commercial activity. So we're not rezoning anything. We're just reconfiguring kind of these unique lots over there. Thank you, Miss Vice President.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Although I don't disagree with the logic presented by Mr. Donovan, I'm of the opinion that if somebody wants us to vote on something, they should be present here at the council meeting to make their case. For that reason, I will not be voting to support us.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Sorry, and I absolutely agree with Mr. Jolly. I've been a stickler about that. Is there a mechanism for us to maybe table it as opposed to just outright denying it tonight? Maybe tabling it to another meeting? I just don't know if they were, if they were noticed, put on notice for not to come tonight. Not sure how that works.
I.
We have a motion on the table right now.
We do have a motion on the table. I think it's up to the council whether or not we proceed to a vote, or we.
Table it.
We can table it. We can remove it to the agenda, be rescheduled for a later day. But there is a motion on the table currently.
Do a sub.
So could I, as the original, the motion maker, could I offer a substitute motion to table this and give?
Support on the substitute.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to give our council program supervisor opportunity to reach out to the petitioner and see if we can try this again.
So we have a substitute motion on the floor from Mr. Donovan with support from Toy. We need a vote on the substitute motion, and then we will come back.
You know, it might be easier if Mr. Donovan and Mr., and if Mr. Morgan, who was supportive, just withdrew it. You wouldn't have to do a separate vote.
I'll withdraw my support.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So we withdrawn on the original motion, and we are now making a motion to table this agenda item, motion by Donovan, support by Toy. Any comments from counsel or the audience? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek.
Aye. The vote passes six-nothing, and the tabling motion is approved. All right, let's move on. We have another lot split. Okay. Request for council approval on a proposed lot split, Department of Assessment, for the property located north of Seven Mile Road and on the west side of Newburgh Road in the southeast quarter of Section 6, 19283 Newburgh Road, and to waive the lot depth and lot area for both proposed parcel one and parcel two. Counsel.
I'll offer an approving for sake of discussion.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Jolly, support by Ms. Toy. The petitioner appears to be here. Name and address for the record, please.
Ma'am, wasaya, 19283 Newburgh in Livonia.
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments first from counsel?
Is she the petitioner?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Ms. Toy?
If I may, what do you want to build there?
We are trying to see if we could build a house for one of my sons as we get older. This way, we have support from one of our siblings.
Do you want to adopt anyone? No. Well, that's awful nice of you. Sorry, I don't mean to be a little funny, but this meeting's kind of come on, but it is what it is. Thank you, Madam President. Just wondered. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jolly.
Ma'am, just to make this very clear, it appears to me that you are asking to split a lot that is currently addressed on Newburgh Road.
Yes.
To split off the rear portion of the lot to create a new lot on Bethany Street.
Correct.
In which you would build a new house. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the house would be for your son?
Yes.
Okay.
One of my sons, yes.
Your favorite son? Listen, I'm looking at a map here, and this seems to be, it will be a similar-sized lot to the ones occurring on Bethany Street and the ones occurring on Newburgh. I don't have a problem with it. I wish you well. I hope it's the favorite son, and I hope you're his favorite mother, right? But no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? Do you have anything else you would like to add?
No.
Any other comments from the audience regarding this issue? All right, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek.
Aye, and the motion passes six-nothing.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. All right, final agenda item. Here we go. Language Change Planning Commission Petition 2024-02-06-01, submitted by Resolution of the City Council on its own motion to the City Planning Commission to determine whether or not to amend Section 6.26 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to provide that no more than two gasoline service stations may be located within 500 feet of any intersection of two or more major thoroughfares, including boulevards, arterial highways, arterial streets, and city major roads, as indicated on the future transportation map of the Livonia Vision 21 master plan. This was from a public hearing held on April 22, 2024. Counsel.
I'll offer a first read. Is it a first read? Is it a first read?
Yes. First read offered by Mr. Jolly. Audience, do we have any audience comments on this issue? Counsel? Okay, all right, first read offered. All right, any, this concludes the regular agenda. Is there any audience communication that is not on the agenda?
Mr. Bernier, if somebody has already spoken during the first public address section of the meeting, and they give the balance of their time back for comments, can they address and use the balance of that time?
The rule, the council has always taken the position that they either address at the beginning or the second session. They have up to three minutes. If they choose not to use the three minutes, that's up to them, and that's pretty much what happened here. There is another meeting, however.
Sir, we will have a study meeting that'll start in about 10 minutes, but you'll have time to address this.
I just want to know how to go forward with it.
Sir, we'll have to wait till the study meeting. It's about 10 minutes. Thank you. All right, is there any other audience communication?
I'll have to do a adjournment.
Any, I was going to say, counsel? I think we can safely show six. All right. Meeting adjourned at 8:29. We'll be back in 10 minutes, 8:39 or 8:40 for our study.